I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. From Broker.
Here.
Shutey.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
Harker.
Here.
For President, Mr. Mayor. Okay, approve the minutes of the December thirteenth meeting.
To approve.
Second.
Motion by Krieger, seconded by Broker to approve the minutes of the December thirteenth. Twenty twenty-two city council meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Any public comment tonight? Now's your chance. Okay, no public comment? Uh, number six, a proclamation honoring the service of Keel Police Chief David P. Funkhauser. Got proclamation here, I'd like to read into the record. And just to, um, inform the, uh, the audience here, we have a full house tonight. I think all the police, everybody from the police department looks like they're here. And, uh, the chief's family is here. Uh, I think it just goes to show what, what kind of respect they have for the chief and how he's led, led the department. So, very good. Thanks for all coming for this, uh, this proclamation. Uh, from the city of Keel, an appreciation to David P. Funkhauser. With sincere appreciation and gratitude, the mayor and common council hereby recognizes seventeen years of selfless community service of David P. Funkhauser as chief of police. He has done an outstanding job modernizing Keel Police Department operations and equipment, managing incidents large and small, enhancing outreach to the community and media, mentoring fellow officers, and building great relationships within and outside of the city. He leaves the Keel Police Department as a model of a professionally-run, small, community police department. Thank you for seventeen years of service to the city of Keel, Chief Funkhauser. You are a credit to the city of Keel and the wider Keel area. Enjoy your retirement. Presented this twentieth day of December twenty twenty-two, Mike Steinhardt, Mayor, Alder Person, Jeremy Frum, John Corb, John Broker, Kathy Shutey, Bill Krieger, and Ellis Harker. No speech?
Well, when I started here, I only have two kids.
That's wrong. Um, yeah, it's hard to believe it's been seventeen years. So, half of my career's been spent, spent here at Keel. When I came here, I had professional goals, obviously, and then personal goals. My personal goal's meant more to me than a professional goal. So, it was more of an issue of wanting to leave a legacy where, uh, leave a legacy where, when I leave, uh, the role as chief here, that they'd be better people from having worked with me than, uh, than anything else. And if I couldn't, if the people that I worked with behind me couldn't say that they're a better person after having worked with me, then I'd fail. So, I'll let them decide if they feel that way or not, but I certainly am a better person for having worked here. Um, I've, I've truly enjoyed my time in this community. And it's gonna be difficult for me to move on, uh, but the time is right. And I thank you all. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve Keel. Uh, the city has come together in some tragic times during our time here. And I can't thank the people, uh, behind me, the, uh, my family and the officers. If they hadn't bought into what I was selling, none of this would've happened. I get a lot of recognition for things that the department has done, and I could not have done any of it without their help. Every single one of them. It's been a true pleasure and joy to work with them. To lead them is, 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 is not the correct term. It's been a great time to work with them. And I miss all of that very deeply. So, thank you all very much. Any votes, maybe, positive? And to all of you. Well, this is very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mary? Comments from the crowd? No? Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And, um, go on to number seven. Proclamation and appreciation of the partnership of the Keel Police Chief David Funkhauser from the Keel Fire Department and Ambulance Service. Chief here. There you go.
This is on behalf of the ambulants and the fire department. Dick's here with me. So, um, on behalf of the Keel Fire Department and Ambulance Service, we would like to thank you for seventeen years of leading the police, Keel Police Department. You have been a reliable partner in countless fires, were the first responders in scene, providing life safety aid on numerous occasions. Assisted us with coordinating personnel resources during large-scale responses, and generally helped us keep the area safe. You are always willing to secure scenes without it. You have done outstanding job bringing the Keel Police Department a twenty-first century, and Keel can be proud through your leadership. We have a unified public safety team. We appreciate all you've done for the community, and you are leaving the Keel Police Department better than you found it. Thank you for seventeen years of service to Keel and your partnership with the Keel Fire Department and Ambulance Service. You are a credit to our profession, Chief Funkhauser. Enjoy your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you.
Be another photo. I can honestly say as, having served as Director of Emergency Services, which is the dispatch center, and, um, which over, yeah, helps coordinate all the public safety response in the county, that when I came here, I knew I was coming to the best police and fire departments in the county, and ambulance service, too. So, I was really lucky and proud when I came here, knowing that I was coming into a very well-run, well-managed situation. So, not all areas of the county can say that, for sure, but it's been, it's been great to work with all of you. And, uh, and help you with your budgets, help you with your equipment, help you retain personnel, all the things that we've done. And we were all partners, you know, all the way along, the last five years I've been here. Thank you so much. Appreciate all that you've done.
I'd like to comment a little bit, too. We probably worked on, what, hundreds, hundreds of incidents, right? At least. And we've never had a disagreement ever on a, on a scene.
Never a disagreement, ever.
It's always a couple of days after. But I publicly said that, right? The proverbial crap that's happened is, "This city's services come together and we work it all." And it's a true honor to be part of that.
And don't be the everybody.
It's just great.
We the mayor, and the straight everybody.
No, it's, I haven't been dreamed. The citizens of this community are fortunate.
They do or not?
No, it's been a point. Yeah, good job. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll put my application on the tire.
You'll be the first volunteer firefighter ever terminated.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job, Dean.
Okay, moving on, uh, number nine, uh, or number eight. Remove from the table, consideration of ordinance six oh six, repealing and recreating chapter twenty of the floodplain zoning. Last meeting, we, uh, we tabled this ordinance, um, to allow additional corrections to be made. So, need the motion to remove it from the table.
Remove or put it back on the table?
Uh, when you put something on the table, you have to remove it and bring it back on.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Broker, seconded by Shutey, to remove from the table the consideration of ordinance six oh six, repealing and recreating chapter twenty for floodplain zoning. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have it removed from the table. Okay, number nine, consideration of ordinance six oh six, repealing and recreating, uh, chapter twenty for the floodplain zoning.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I don't wanna rehash a lot of what I said last week about it, but basically, all the, all the internal references, um, within, uh, the model ordinance that they give all municipalities, all towns, villages, cities, counties, have been updated to reflect our, our, um, formatting for our, uh, ordinances that we have for our city code. It's a lot of them. I mean, we start looking through there, there's a lot of references to chapter twenty, whatever it is. So, anyway, it's all done now, um, here for your consideration. Again, it's a model ordinance from the state. There's really nothing much that we can do within it, or nip or tuck or anything like that. Um, we just need to update the ordinance.
Any questions on the ordinance?
Well, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, and it has nothing to do with my trust in you, uh, Mr. Alec as administrator, but has a second set of ayes reviewed this?
Uh, no, Ms. Shutey, only because I...
Just gotta jump.
Well, it's just the fact that it's just purely, given the language, given the references within it, you updated as best, it's not, you know, as best. I went through it multiple times, three, four times, and, and corrected.
I didn't read it verbatim, but I did skim through it.
Okay, so you're the decision. Okay, in that case, I would make the motion that, um, ordinance six oh six, uh, repealing and recreating chapter twenty, the floodplain zoning, be accepted.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Motion by Shutey, seconded by Broker to, uh, approve ordinance six oh six, repealing and recreating chapter twenty for floodplain zoning. Uh, roll call? Broker.
Yes.
Shutey.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Harker.
Yes.
Four zero, Mr. Mayor. Okay, number ten, remove from the table, consideration of change order to contract G, increase of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to regrade temporary stockpile of suitable fill material stabilized and landscaped. This is at the sewage treatment plant.
I will make the motion to remove from the table the consideration of change order to contract G, regenerating the fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to regrade the temporary stockpile of suitable fill material, stabilizer, and landscape. Second.
Motion by Shutey, seconded by Broker, to remove from the table consideration of change order to contract G, increase of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to regrade temporary stockpile of suitable fill material stabilized and landscaped. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We got three, one. Okay, number eleven, uh, consideration of the change order to contract G, increase of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to regrade temporary stockpile of suitable fill material stabilized and landscaped. Think we need to have some, just some clarification on this?
Sure. Um, the stockpile of bill was part of, uh, all three contracts. So, uh, first two contracts with Myron, any suitable fill got placed on, uh, in a, in a stockpile location. Um, when those two contracts with Myron expired, the contract for duration based contract out and, uh, were finalized, and, uh, building, uh, Diorin building contract finalized. Uh, we took this fill, the work for this work, out of those contracts. Um, at the time, there was some interest from Sargento that they had a use for this fill. Um, they came back to do, that, uh, they didn't have use for this fill. So, we waited till then to put it back in this contract G, um, as, as a item. This is approximately nine thousand square yards of fill, which, if you remember, the pile that was on the Nash Estate site, it's that big a pile of fill. So, substantial for the digging of the ration basis and all that, so.
It's an absolutely ridiculous cost. Absolutely ridiculous.
Has there been any exploration of another way to, uh, handle this at perhaps a lesser cost? Any other outreach to try?
We did contact others throughout the time we were waiting for Sargento. We contacted other haulers and that. Um, the problem is that nobody wants to do it for, you know, nobody wants to come and get it for nothing. So, if we wanna pay to haul it to them, they would take it.
So, what would that cost be?
That would be over a hundred thousand dollars to haul it offsite. But it's part of this, if, if we don't do it under this contract, then we are responsible to, uh, stabilize that hill ourselves as a city. So, we have to put topsoil on it, seed it, stabilize it as we wait for, you know, something to happen that would use it.
Okay, and, and just out of curiosity, if we stabilized it and seeded it, it could stay there, correct?
It could stay there, but it's not ideal the way it would be positioned because it would create some holes or whatever and retain some. Because it's just a pile, and, uh, so it's not spread out. It's just a pile of build that has to be, you know, spread out made so that it doesn't capture water and create areas that drainage can happen.
Chris, let me ask a question. Was this, this cost was originally in the contract? It was originally in the contract?
Yes.
And then we took it out?
We took it out.
So, now we're, we're, now we're putting it back in?
Putting it back in.
When did we take it out of the contract? I wanna see that.
I looked it up. I don't remember.
Then, then was it based solely on the request or the suggestion that Sargento may have a use for, for it or all of it?
Yes.
Yeah, we thought it was gonna be hauled, and it just did not come through. Bill, I, I, Alder Person, Krieger, I'm sorry. Um, I just don't have that information at hand, where we took it out, but...
So, this fifty-six thousand doesn't actually remove the stockpile at all? It just...
It grades it and uses it as a berm around the property and seeds it. You know, seeds and stabilizes it for that purpose.
Right now, it's just a big pile, big pile.
I, I understand that.
It's gotta be spread out and landscaped.
Uh, and, and I understand that, but I mean, my, my brain thought was, we were all talking about removing it, and that's why I was asking about if we just kept it, but... Someone's gonna put the berm and all that, because the city's gonna do that?
Well, under this, under this change order, it's all through the other, the C.D. Smith contract. So, Soper would be the contractor for that, and then their, their landscaper would do it. The landscaper would see.
This contract would do that.
Well, and I understand that, but I also would wonder if it would be possible for some,
and I know this is a huge project, okay? But fifty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money, Mr. Mayor. Is there some way we could with our staff? I mean, that's a lot of overtime paid.
What do we pay to haul it, haul it, the stuff from, uh, from?
But we're not hauling it. We're gonna be...
I'm just saying, it, it's a, it's a matter of digging material and, and moving it. You still gotta move it.
Right.
There's labor there.
Um, when we did the, just moving it across the road, I believe that was right around eighty thousand dollars, um, when we did that.
When the city did that?
Yeah.
No, we contracted for that.
We, we contracted that.
And again, it comes bound to the fact that you're talking about hu- well over a hundred loads.
Yeah, yeah, the manpower is pretty substantial in this, so.
I do understand that the manpower is substantial. I just, I mean, that's a year's wages for somebody. So, what I guess I can, so, Mr. Mayor, if there really is no other option, we need to do this.
Well, it was, it was, it was actually built into the contract to begin with. We took it out, and now we're putting it back in, so...
Yeah, I think if, if we did it and had to stabilize it, we'll save probably more than half of what it's costing. It would probably be in the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
And what dictates, uh, any timeline whereby we have to have that stabilized?
Um, it just, uh, by the time the contract is done, then the, then it's kinda into our, our point. Discussing proximity to everything, everything will be checked off by the DNR and rural development. So, then it'll be by that point, we have to have everything stabilized and ready to go.
So, and by the spring?
Yeah.
Is that, but the only thing I was thinking was, uh, what if we would shop this around to say somebody like Ray Excavating or somebody like that, if there's a, someplace we could put an advertisement out there to try and get this to a more reasonable number? I mean, I understand it was originally in the contract, and something fell apart that, you know, we could've saved that money, but now, now we can't.
I guess my other concern is that this needs to be done by spring.
We won't get it done by spring.
The ground is already frozen. How are they gonna get this done by spring?
It's totally solid.
I mean...
Well, you'll start at the spring.
Yes, start.
Once it's thawed.
So, the DNR will go ahead and give us the permits even if it's not completed though?
Well, they'll give us, the, there's really no, there'll be like, they'll be keeping an eye on the silt fence around it and making sure that it's not running off into the wetlands there or across the trail.
Okay.
Come this spring, though, there's no access point except on the trail to get to it then, because then the fencing will be around the wastewater plant. So, we'll have to access it off the trails. We'd have to access it off the trail system by Sargento coming out of that.
Well, probably gonna have to do that anyway, aren't you, because...
Well, when Sargento was gonna take it originally, at the first part, they could come through the beginning of it. They could, we had it lined up to they come through the plant, but now there's work that has progressed that, that option is no longer available.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
My only other concern with the idea of trying to pull it out there for anybody else that might be interested in and taking it is that the current economic conditions aren't that good, and the interest rates are up there, and I don't see, uh, large-scale building and expansion going on around here to any great degree in the foreseeable future.
Is there any possibility that, of course, might be, is there some of it?
It's not, I mean, I think it's not, it's not the, it's, it's fill to fill in something you wanna fill in a hole. It's not, it's not, I mean, you could do structurally for fill. That they can get all the structural fill they want from the gravel pit. Adderall is their wash, basically their wash sand works well for structural fills.
I understand that this was originally part of the contract. And I understand that we, you know, we took that as a credit, and now we need to do something with this, but... I, I, I just, and I know it's the holiday season, so you're probably not gonna get anywhere, but I guess I would have hoped that there would've been some other outreach or avenues explored.
I think you need to understand, too, when these things are quoted, they're quoted in a package, right?
Yeah.
The whole package is, is quoted, so...
Right, yeah.
It was part of the original package for the whole...
And we whittle these change orders down as we go, um, you know, off the original, this is the original cost they wanted to bill us for this.
So, my other question then is, this company that's left, if they finish their contract in spring before this is done, then they're off the hook for this?
Yep.
So, this is kinda like Plan Rush and Rula.
If we don't, yeah, if we don't put it, if we don't add it in as a change order, then, yes, then it would be...
Then they're not contractually obligated to do it, but if you were to approve the change order, they would be contractually obligated to do it.
Do it, okay, even if they're finished with everything else?
Yeah, they're, this is part of their contract. They need to finish the, the fill project.
Well, I'm not happy about it, but I really don't see any other thing that we can do.
And based on, uh, the enge- I mean, the engineer, talking with engineer, that it is kinda the going rate for excavating, so, I mean, they look at, and they work at it. We whittled it down from the original cost to something more reasonable.
Reasonable?
Well, reasonable in, in the eyes of the engineering, like, engineer first guy.
Of course, of course it's reasonable in the eyes.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Well?
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the quote here, to, the, the quote said, "To reshape the pile of material was thirty-one five."
Okay.
And to reseed to, uh, additional double rye seeding, seed fertilized cover with erosion mat, uh, minimal soil preparation is twenty-one seven. So, there's your, there's your cost.
Why is your...
Thirty thousand to basically spread the material out, and another twenty-two thousand to seed.
Okay, that's fifty-two thousand.
Well, I, I'm...
I know, I know. I'm picking that up.
I'm breaking it out here to what the...
Right, plus the contractor markup, change order, which is the twenty-nine hundred or whatever.
And this is then part of the money that the, the new treatment plant and the department will eventually recoup and be able to pay back from their profits, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's all part of the law, sorry, rural development law.
Okay.
So, it's part of the project.
And that money is coming from your department?
Yeah.
The profits you make. So, it's not the taxpayers directly that are paying for this?
Correct.
I'll make the motion to approve consideration of change order to contract G, increase of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to regrade the stockpile of suitable fill material, stabilize and landscape it, with the caveat that if there are any issues with it within six months of its completion, they will come back and make the corrections or reseed or whatever they have to do.
Yeah, yeah, with the change order, that will, that will be part of that. We have control that we may come back and make that plan.
Okay.
And make sure it goes.
So, we won't have to see this again?
Speaker, Alder Person, Shutey, was your motion to consider or to approve?
I'm sorry, to approve.
Okay, this is all right.
Thank you.
You guys second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
I'm afraid it will cost us more if we don't dig into it now.
Well, then I guess as long as it's coming out of the, the pockets of the people that are using the sewer again, you know, charges to pay it.
Any other discussion?
What else am I gonna do?
Roll call, please.
Yeah, motion by, uh, Shutey, seconded by Broker to approve change order to contract G, increase of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents to regrade the temporary stockpile of suitable fill material stabilized and landscaped. Roll call?
Broker?
Yes.
Shutey?
Yes.
Krieger?
No.
Harker?
Yes.
Passes three to one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, number twelve, consideration of approval of class B beer and class B liquor license for Dos Locos Cocos LLC DBA Tabasco's Mexican restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There hasn't been any issues. This is just to approve their class B beer and class B liquor license, presumably probably for margaritas and other things, for what they can serve.
Motion to approve the class B beer and liquor license as requested.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
This is a direct, kind of a direct transfer from the previous...
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yep, from, uh, the Stone Dinger. Correct.
Okay, motion by Broker, seconded by Harker to approve of the class B beer and class B liquor license for Dos Locos Cocos LLC DBA... for Dos Locos Cocos LLC DBA Tabasco's Mexican restaurant. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Broker, seconded by Schutte to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.